Hymn 596 in the BB Book. We'll sing this as an opening hymn, after the singing of which I shall attempt to offer prayer, and then we'll look into the Scriptures if the Lord wills. Jesus, Lord, we look to Thee. Let us in Thy name agree. Show Thyself the prince of peace. Be thou just forever cease. Each to each unite in Thee. Come and spread Thy banner here. Make us one heart and mind. Courteous be to full and kind. Lowly meek in thought and word. All together like our Lord. Let us each for other care. Each and others burden bear. To Thy church a pattern give. Show our true believers live. Let us then with joy remove On the wings of angels fly. Let's bow together. Our most gracious sovereign of the universe, we thank Thee that Thou hast put it into the hearts of these Thy children to meet together. That Thou hast given us love one for another. That Thou hast blessed us with a comfortable place to meet. That Thou had more than that granted us the desire to be together. And we pray that Thou hast indeed gathered us and are in our midst right now to teach us, to approve us, to instruct us, to give us what's needful. And we pray Thou would open Thy word to our minds and more than that to our hearts, and that Thou would enable us to see with the blessed eye of faith, the Lord Jesus, our great sin bearer, our great high priest, our great intercessor. Be with those of our number that could not meet with us today, whatever the hindering caused. Touch them as well with the Spirit of Thy grace and mercy. What we ask for ourselves, Lord, we beg that Thou would do for all those that Thou hast called unto Thyself today to meet together. That the word of life might go forth. That all praise, all honor, and all glory would be to Thee. It's in the blessed name of Jesus we ask. Amen. I would like us this morning to look for a few moments at the 17th chapter of the book of Acts. I'm going to begin with verse 1. I don't know how the Lord would lead over the next few months, but I've been thinking about various and sundry things. And I thought, well, maybe we should look at the book of First Thessalonians. That's believed by most to be the first epistle Paul wrote. And then I got to thinking, well, how come Paul to go to Thessalonica? What about it? And that's what we're going to find in Acts 17. If the Lord wills, and we do do that, then might consider this kind of an introduction. Paul's on his second journey, if I understand it correctly. "And when he had passed through Amphipolis and Apollonia, they came to Thessalonica, where was a synagogue of the Jews. And Paul, as his manner was, went in unto them." Now, we know that Paul, who styles himself the apostle to the Gentiles, who was called by God to carry the name of Jesus Christ to the Gentile nations specifically, always understood to the Jew first, then to the Greek. And he went in the synagogues, where there was one, and did this, that's what he said, as his manner was. He went unto them. "And three Sabbath days reasoned with them out of the Scriptures." Now, of course, what scriptures are we talking about? We're talking about the Old Testament, what we call the Old Testament today, aren't we? Paul was, humanly speaking, a master of the letter of the Old Testament, I believe that. And when he sat at the feet of Gamaliel, the supposedly most learned and wisest rabbi of the bunch at that time, he learned everything that man could teach him. And I'm going to tell you what Gamaliel could teach him. Gamaliel could teach him the letter of the law. He could teach him the letter of the prophets. He could teach him the letter of the Psalms. But he couldn't give him any spiritual insight at all on what those things really meant. All he could learn from Gamaliel was the letter that killeth. However, at that time that he was learning it, Paul didn't know that the letter killeth. He thought life was in that letter. He thought life was in that law. Reminds you, doesn't it, of what Jesus told the Pharisees, recorded in the Gospel of John, when he said, "You search the Scriptures, because in them you think you have eternal life." And let me tell you something. There are men passing under the name of ministers of Jesus Christ today who believe the same thing, who believe that in this book they can have eternal life. Now, y'all know I listen to some weird things on YouTube and things. And I heard this fellow say this. Now, I heard him say it with my own ears. I'm not... He put it out there for public consumption, that unless you quote somebody a verse of Scripture from the King James Version of the Bible, they cannot be saved. Cannot. That God will not save anyone unless you quote the King James Version of the Bible, at least one verse to them. You can't paraphrase it. You can't use another one. He thinks there's eternal life in this book. And this book is paper and ink. And that's all it is. And Paul thought, just like those Pharisees thought. Jesus told him. He said, "You think in them you think you have eternal life, but they are the ones, they are they, the Scriptures are the one that testify of Me." Then testify of what you can do to be saved. They didn't testify about how that if you keep the law all the way, just the way it says, you're going to have eternal life. Oh, no. They're a testimony of Jesus Christ, and they are also a testimony to the failure of man. Paul said this. Well, now, brethren, I know it's here. I do. I read it this morning. Ah, if I'd get on the right page, it'd be all right. All right. Paul's talking about the law and grace and all of these things. And he said this. "I was alive without the law once." "I was alive outside the law." He was outside the law looking in on it, if I can use that expression. Without, normally, in the... In the Greek New Testament means apart from or outside. And Paul's outside the law, but he's looking at it. And he's seeing the commandment, and he's looking at it as his rule. And he was alive then, because he could look and he could see. But when the commandment came, in other words, when the commandment got in me and the law was made manifest to him, and he saw this, what happened? Sin revived, and I died. And the commandment, which was to life, I found to be unto death. I just knew I had life in that commandment. But when I saw it for what it was, when it was revealed to me how the law... Well, we're going to get to this right now. Does its work. taking occasion by the commandment, won, deceived me. Sin took the commandment and deceived him. How did it do it? By saying, "You can obey Me." Sin deceived him into thinking that he could obey the law and thereby gain the favor of God and life eternal by his own works. That's the deception. But then number two happened. And by it slew me. The more he tried, the less he could do. The more he tried, the more he saw that when he would do good, sin was present with him, and he could not do the things that he would. And it slew him. The commandment came, sin revived. All of that stuff he thought he had put away from himself by his works and keeping the law just revived up in his heart. And he saw that by keeping that commandment, it couldn't put away the sin. And so sin revived in him. What he thought was dead was really alive. I'm reminded of an expression that William Huntington used once. And I think, although he applied it to something else, I think it applies to those who want to look to the law for sanctification, salvation, you name it. Just look to the law instead of to Christ. He was talking about this woman in whose house he visited, and he said he was sorry to see a piano in there. "Because that piano was nothing but the devil's rattle to quiet a crying conscience." And I'm telling you, brethren, it's my opinion that people look at the law that way. When they... When the... I'll just go ahead and say it. When those who are not born of the Spirit are telling you to look to the law to get your sanctification, your salvation in time, whatever they want to call it, they're giving you a rattle, like you'd give a baby, to quiet a crying conscience that knows you're a sinner and that you have disobeyed not just the letter of that law, but you have trampled upon the spirit of it. When we read in the Sermon on the Mount Jesus's application of the law and how he said, "You've heard it said in old times, but I say unto you," he took the law out of just an action and showed that it's the thought and intent of the heart and the mind that is much a transgressor as the action itself. And you can keep outwardly a show of humility, a show of works, a show of duty, and yet your heart is still a sink of corruption because sin, as the hymn writer said, "If I read, or pray, or hear, sin is mixed with all I do." And we don't say that to glory in it. We say that because it's the truth, and we want it to be different, but we can't find out how. I'll tell you why it can't be different. Because the carnal mind is ever enmity against God. It is never subject to the law of God, because it can't be. And that old man within us still loves sin and loves the principle of sin and wants more of it. And the new man that's born of the spirit of God hates it, and the warfare is there. And yes. Yes. Sometimes that old man comes out. But thank God that the new man of grace is there, convicting, confirming, and letting us know that we have transgressed the commands of the most holy God. And rather than tell us we need to get busy and continue to do our duty, it says to us, "Look to Jesus." "Don't look within. When I turn my eyes within, all is dark and vain and wild." We do it. I do. I'll bet you do too. You look at yourself and you think, "Oh, my. I am such a sinner. I don't know that I'm a child of God." But that hope springs up. That glorious hope says it's not based on you, it's based on Christ. And your salvation is not based on your duty, it's based on your relationship with Jesus Christ. He reasoned with them out of the Scriptures in that they thought within them they had eternal life, but instead they were the testimony of Jesus Christ. And that's what it goes on here in verse 3 to tell us. "Opening and alleging that Christ must needs have suffered and risen again from the dead." Now, notice how it phrases that. "Christ must needs have suffered and risen again from the dead." I believe that's telling us that Paul preached that very generically out of the Scriptures, that there is a Messiah talked about in the Scriptures, particularly in the prophets. Moses called him that prophet likened to Me that God would raise up. Isaiah called him the suffering servant. Jeremiah, Ezekiel, David in the Psalms, that blessed 22nd Psalm. In the Proverbs at the eighth chapter, all speak of him. They all speak of him, the anointed one. That's all Christ is, the anointed. It's not a last name, we know that. I'm not telling you all anything you don't already know in that regard. I hope I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, period. Because this testimony is revealed from faith to faith. It's the Spirit that bears witness, and I hope your spirit's bearing witness with this. But he opened and alleged that Christ must needs have suffered. What was the expectation of the Pharisee at that time? I use them primarily because they equate more to the fundamentalist of today and some of the so-called evangelicals than any of the other sects of Judaism. And that was that their anointed one, when he came, was going to deliver them physically from the yoke of the Romans, in this case now, as it was then, who had conquered their land. They weren't slaves. No. Israelites weren't slaves. Now, they were part of the Roman Empire. And as they were going to find out in about 69 AD, you don't rebel against Rome. That's when it was time to manifest, I believe, the kingship of Jesus to them. But I'm not going to get into that right this minute. But they believed that it would be a physical earthly deliverance, and they would be set up as the physical earthly kings. And they believed that they would rule over these Gentiles and all of this. Instead, here comes Paul. He says, "Well, yes. Now, the Scriptures do tell us of the anointed of God, but he's one who must suffer." Where would he take them? 53rd chapter of Isaiah, probably, where the Ethiopian eunuch was reading when Philip come upon him in his chariot. Oh, the sufferings. "He must needs have suffered." This wasn't something unplanned and unprepared for by Almighty God. No, he set forth the sufferings of Jesus from the beginning. He must die the death as the kinsman, redeemer for his people. "He shall grow up before him as a tender plant and as a root out of a dry ground." A root out of a dry ground is not going to bring forth a healthy, beautiful plant, is it? If there's not water there. It's going to bring forth something scraggly, for want of a better word. And that's what he tells us. "He hath no form nor comeliness. And when we see him, no beauty that we should desire him. He's despised and rejected of men." What John write? "He came unto his own, and his own received him not." How many times did the anger of the Jewish multitudes come against him? At least a couple of times where it's recorded, they picked up stones to stone him. "What good work are you going to stone me for?" Oh, not for a good work, because you blasphemed. You made yourself equal with God. He was rejected of men. Now, those despised him. Think with me for just a minute Peter. He began to speak to them about the death he should die at Jerusalem. Lord bless the Gospel writers for including his stories in there. I bet you all see yourself as Peter sometimes. I know I do. He takes Jesus aside because he doesn't want everybody else to hear this anymore. He says, "Lord, let that be far from you. Let it be far from you." But Jesus say, "Get behind me, Satan. Get behind me, Satan." Peter rejected the fact that Jesus must die. He says, "Lord, I'm going to..." He says, "Lord, I'm gonna stand up for you. All men may forsake you, but I'm not going to. Man, I got a sword here. They are not gonna take you." The Lord just told him, "Before the cock-crows, you'll deny me thrice." Not once, not twice, three times. Sure and certain it was from the lips of the great prophet of his people. And sure enough, Peter did it. You know, we're not told that any of his disciples were at the crucifixion except John. They all fled. All of them, but one. One betrayed him. Talk about a rejection. That's the ultimate rejection, wasn't it? That he betrayed his Lord and master with a kiss. A symbol of friendship. Yes, he was despised, he was rejected of men, he was rejected both of his friends and his enemies. Now, he's gonna bring his friends back to himself, isn't he? And we can be thankful to this day that in our, our past, I don't know about y'all. I can only speak for myself in this regard. But there was a time when there was certainly no beauty in him that I desired him. I would reject him in a heartbeat. I had nothing, he had nothing for me. And I didn't want anything he might have. And until I saw myself as a broken, down, needy sinner who could not, could not under any circumstances do anything to change that situation. Then my hope was that he, though I had, past tense, rejected him, he had never rejected me. Now, all that were his, he says, "They're in my hand and none can pluck them out. And they're in my Father's hand and none can pluck them out." There's no rejection there. It's not, "If you'll do good, Jesus will be good to you." That's man's philosophy at work. That's, no, it's not, that's not even good philosophy. That's man's religion at work. That's a religion of the flesh. If I do good, God will bless me. If I perform this action, God will do this. And you can carry that to whatever degree you want to. All the way up to those word of faith guys like Kenneth Copeland. Or Oral Roberts, "Send me a hundred dollars." That's a seed in faith. You're gonna get ten times, Lord give you a thousand if you send me a hundred. He does not reject his children, though men have rejected him. I think of the prodigals. He took his inheritance, waved goodbye to his father and said, "See you someday, maybe. I'm going off to be somebody, something special." And when he came to himself, after he'd wasted his substance with riotous living, and all of those whom he thought were his friends had turned his back on him. And he was working in a menial task not fit for any Jew 'cause he was herding swine and feeding them. Talk about ceremonial uncleanliness. He had it, didn't he? And his father didn't ask him, "Son, what you been doing? You smell bad, like you been in the pigsty. What have you been doing?" No, his father came to him, saw him afar off. The son had rejected the house of the father until the time came for him to come back. And he did. And the father did not reject him, but he ran to him, he met him on the way and said, "This is my son that was thought was dead." Now he's come back and he fell on his neck and kissed him. Didn't matter to him whether he was nasty. Didn't matter to him whether he was ceremonially unclean for being with the hogs. It was his son. It was that relationship. And it's the same way with us. Those who have, are in relationship with Jesus Christ, no matter what they have done in the past, when God brings them back to himself, they're ready. And he is pleased to greet them as children. He's despised and rejected of men, a man of sorrows and acquainted with grief, and we hid as it were our faces from him. He was despised and we esteemed him not. Surely he has born our griefs and carried our sorrows. Yet we did esteem him stricken, smitten of God and afflicted. And you esteemed him right. What the prophet Zechariah said, "Awake o' sword against my shepherd, and the man that is my fellow smite the shepherd." And that good shepherd, as Jesus described himself in the Gospel of John, was smitten with sword of the Lord. But he was wounded for our transgressions. He was bruised for our iniquities. The chastisement of our peace was upon him, and with his stripes we are healed. He was taken from prison and judgment, and who shall declare his generation? For he was cut off from the land of the living. And he made his grave with the wicked and with the rich in his death. Because he had done no violence, neither was any deceit in his mouth. Yet it pleased the Lord to bruise him. He hath put him to grief. Now, notice. He was taken from prison, verse eight, "He was taken from prison and from judgment, and who shall declare his generation?" Verse ten, "It pleased the Lord to bruise him." He hath put him to grief. When thou shalt make his soul in offering for sin, the sacrifice of his body on the tree, he shall see his seed." There's the generation, the seed. And he shall prolong his days. In other words, though he's made his bed with the rich in death, his days are going to be prolonged again, days, I believe, of life. And the pleasure of the Lord shall prosper in his hand. See, Christ must have suffered and risen again from the dead. Because if Christ was to be the suffering servant to make this sacrifice, if he was the one that Isaiah wrote about there, and he was the one that the psalmist wrote about. He said, "Thou shalt not suffer thine holy one to seek corruption." He must be raised. Death could not hold him. Because he, in himself, by his own thought, word, or deed, had never, ever committed one transgression at all. He was impeccable. He could not do it. And therefore, he did not. Therefore, Christ must needs suffered, not for his own transgressions, but for those of his people. Not for his iniquities, for the iniquities of his generation. He must go down and he must be risen again from the dead. I know that my Redeemer liveth, Job said. And once he had established that, the apostle Paul, in the synagogue, these three Sabbath days. Once he had established that, then what did he do? He said, "This Jesus, whom I preach unto you, is that Christ." First, he proved that there was an anointed one. First, he reasoned that that, then he, that that anointed one must suffer and die. Then that that same one must rise from the dead. And then he said, "Yes. Y'all go ahead and agree, yes. Now this Jesus is that one. He's the one, he's the Lamb of God. As John the Baptist said, "Behold, the Lamb of God that taketh away the sin of the world." We're witnesses. He said he appeared to the women. He appeared to Peter. Appeared to the disciples. Five hundred he wants. And lastly, he appeared to me, as one born out of due time. I've seen this risen Christ. I know he's not in the grave. This Jesus, whom I preach unto you, is Christ. Sounds like in Thessalonica, it was much like in Corinth. I determined to know nothing among you save Jesus Christ and him crucified. Do we have a better message that we can bring? Would it be a better message if, if we came in here to you and gave you a little lecture on self-esteem? Give you a little talking to about, oh, I don't know, how to be a better citizen and obey the government? Make sure everything's gonna go right with you? No, nobody wants to hear that, not the one that's been born in the spirit. They want to hear of the things of Jesus Christ. That's what the Holy Spirit was given to do, isn't it? Jesus told his disciples that. The Spirit of truth's coming, he's gonna take the things of mine. He's gonna show them unto you. He'll not speak of himself. That's an important word. He shall not speak of himself. How many of these modern Christian churches do you hear saying, "The Holy Spirit told me"? And it might be something totally contrary to what we find written. Now, do you believe the Holy Spirit spoke to them of that? I don't. I believe a spirit spoke to them of that. But I don't believe it was God's Holy Spirit, because if he is going to speak to one of the saints of God, he's gonna take of the things of Christ and show it unto them. He's gonna show you Jesus either in his sufferings or in his glory. That this Jesus, whom I preach to you, is Christ to the exclusion of all others. There's not another one coming. There is not one that has come before. This is the one in whom all the prophecies of the Old Testament converge. This is the one who could fulfill the law to Ajo and the Tidler. This is the one who was sent from heaven. How'd Paul learn all that? At the feet of Gomelio? I believe he was taught it by Jesus himself in the desert of Arabia. And Paul said he went to Arabia before he came back to Antioch. I believe the Lord revealed it to him. I do. The religion of Jesus Christ is the religion of revelation. But it's not some way-out thing. It's not something new and different. Oh, it's new and different to the old man. But it's as old as this book and older. Because it goes back into the annals of eternity. That God's children have ever been with their Savior and in their Savior. And some of them believed and consorted with Paul and Silas. And of the devout Greeks, a great multitude. And of the chief women, not a few. Some of them believed. I want you to think about that in light of what Paul wrote to the Corinthians again. Here's a whole synagogue of Jews and proselytes. That's the devout Greeks. They were proselytes to the Jewish religion. Who were there in the synagogue with the native, the natural Jew. What made them to differ? That's what Paul asked Church of Corinth, isn't it? Who made thee to differ? And here's the key. And what do you have that you did not receive? These received by grace, through faith, the faith of Jesus Christ. Must never be puffed up 'cause we received it, that's the way Paul went on and said, "And why you boasting as if you didn't receive it?" Thankfully, thankfully, ninety-nine percent of the old Baptists I've known didn't have that problem. They didn't boast like they hadn't received it. They knew where it came from. They knew that they were nothing. Less than nothing. Altogether vanity. And they knew that when they were given the hope of eternal life and they were born by the above, by the spirit of Almighty God, that they had something they couldn't get in nature. That it had to come from without. It had to come from above. It's the same way with them. They consorted with Paul and Silas. They wanted to be with those of lack precious faith. I'm gonna tell you, brother, and there are times when I wanted to be with those of lack precious faith that I couldn't be. Distance, time, things of the world, all sorts of things pop up. Didn't stop the desire. And I think I'm speaking to folks that feel the same way. Want to be with saints of God, even when they can't be sometimes. Desire the fellowship of the brethren. Not based on anything in this world, but based on Jesus. The one who died. The Christ who rose again and ascended unto the Father, his Father. And we hope our Father. Oh, brethren. Lord willing. There'll be more to come. I'd hope to be blessed to look into more of the seventeenth chapter of Acts and then look at First Thessalonians, at least part of it. As the Lord gives utterance. Brethren, pray for us that the, we might be kept by Almighty God through faith unto salvation, ready to be revealed. Pray for each other. Pray that the Lord would give us mercy, not just individually, but corporately as well. Somebody says, what are you doing, giving us homework? No. I hope I'm stirring up your pure mind. Not your carnal mind, but your pure mind. The mind of Christ that you have. I know you can't utter a word before the Lord till he puts it in you. But I can't either. But I hope we have the desire of good of our brethren, wherever they are. Wherever they are, doesn't make any difference whether they're in this country, in another country, wherever. Y'all can consider yourselves dismissed. And I thank you for being here, I thank you for your attention. And I hope that the Lord would richly bless us.